We'll call our meeting back to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Delete us tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance. It's one of our award-winning students from Topeka West High School. Linda, if you'd please come forward and lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Sorry not to ask you first. So what's exciting about her, and I don't see any of her classmates here who've got the same award, but so what's so very exciting about Linda? Not only has she been a student who's participated in our Youth Entrepreneurs Business Camp, Westar Energy, she also just this year was awarded or recognized with the Self Engineering Fellowship at KU, which is the most rich scholarship, pretty much. It's the richest fellowship that they offer for any engineering student at KU. That's the cream of the crop, so. We hope that she'll remember definitely, Westar Energy at least, and in certain big public schools. So, okay, our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I move to adopt the... The Board of Education will adopt the agenda as presented.
The motions are second. Dr. McCarthy, a motion, a second, a discussion on the motion. None seen, I think we are ready to vote. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is school highlights. And I see Dr. Anderson coming forward to lead us in what is a great, bunch of great news.
This is exciting. It is wonderful when you look around and you have a room full of recognition. Now, that's some good stuff. And so with that good stuff, I'm gonna start off with our Challenge Awards. Mrs. Representative Ann Ma, please come forward. I'm gonna step aside so that she can share what the Challenge Award is, and then we'll proceed on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and the Board, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize and celebrate a great success story in our state. Topeka 501 is making a real difference for our most at-risk students. Knowing how much hard work and commitment goes into that effort, I'm proud and pleased to honor your schools tonight with the 2016 Challenge Awards. And it is a team sport. It doesn't... It's not the students alone or the administrators, but the parents and the kids. Everybody has to work together to make this happen. I'll tell you a little bit about the awards. The Challenge Award recognizes schools for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishment based on the Kansas Assessment Results, graduation rates, and attendance, and some other factors they look at. The Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force created this award 14 years ago, and they worked to recognize the hard work of our public school teachers, administrators, and students in overcoming obstacles that students face. In the years since this award was created, we've come a long way, but there still is work to be done, and that's why we're counting on schools like yours to continue pushing forward. Our State Board of Education vision is Kansas leads the world in student success, and that's not just a motto or a bunch of hype. That is our moonshot goal, and with schools like those that we're going to recognize tonight, we can do this. I know all of you are working hard, and some days it must feel quite thankless, but I want you to know that you are making a difference. So I have a number of awards to present. Again, these were based on the test results from last year's 2016 state assessments. And again, it is based on recognizing students who are at risk, but they overcome those obstacles, and the teachers help them overcome those obstacles to score in the top 60 schools in the state. So let me start.
Representative Ma, will you start? Yes, Austin, who was here throughout last year for these awards, could you please come forward as well, so we can shake the hands of all of our awardees? And please know that at the end of all of the awards, we will be taking photos, and you'll be with the entire school board at that time taking photos as well. All right.
Great, yes, we are. Stout Elementary School actually received two awards. They got an award for closing the achievement gap in 5th grade reading and in 5th grade math last year. Quincy Elementary School is being recognized for closing the achievement gap in 3rd grade math. We also had two awards for Marjory French Middle School for closing the achievement gap in 8th grade reading and 7th grade reading last year. We also have an award for Landon Middle School for closing that achievement gap in 7th grade math. We have two awards for Highland Park for closing that achievement gap in 10th grade reading and 10th grade math. We have two awards for Highland Park Central, one for closing the achievement gap in 4th grade reading and in 4th grade math. Congratulations. And last but not least, Chase Middle School for closing the achievement gap in 8th grade math. Well, I just ask you, please keep setting high expectations, keep supporting each other, and keep believing in what we do. It does pay. Thank you.
Now, continuing with our awards, we now have, and remember, stay for the end of the recognitions for about five minutes so we can take photos with everyone. At this time, we're gonna acknowledge our Senior of the Month, Mr. Dustin Dick from Topeka West. Can you please come up, talk a little bit about our senior, and then bring her on?
This month's Senior of the Month is Linda Dean. She is the valedictorian of her senior class at Topeka West this year. She has a, probably one of the highest GPAs I've ever seen a student have, 4.57 GPA. While at Topeka West, she's participated in Scholars Bowl, she's been a Link Crew member, she's taken about every honors or AP course we have to offer. Almost all of her education's been in the Topeka Public Schools, other than when she left the state for a couple of years. And, let's see, oh, she tutors at the A+ Learning Center. She's really just an all-around good person and a nice person to be around. And like Mr. Wood said, she is a Self Fellow at KU. That's a $33,000 scholarship. Along with that one, she's also been awarded 15 other scholarships and has interviewed for a few others that she's waiting in the air yet as well. So, pretty accomplished young lady.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. Mr. Dick actually gave me some few questions that I'm supposed to answer, right? And thank you for the attention. He asked me how my friends would characterize me, and they'd probably say I'm a pretty stubborn and usually have all-out arguments in math class. Pretty adventurous, pretty outgoing. The most memorable experience in high school, probably one of them would be being a part of the Westar program over the summer and also being a mentor for the freshmen, incoming freshmen. And after high school, I'm actually going to the University of Kansas. I'll be a Self Fellow, I'll be in the honors program. And after college, for five years from now, hopefully, I will be an engineer who will be making prosthetics and hopefully just making the world a better place.
Give and then answer questions?
Oh, okay. It's the caterpillars.
This is about her fourth gift this year.
Do you mind holding that up so we can see what it says?
Oh, sorry.
We have a few members who need this, okay.
Any questions for Mrs. Dick?
Any questions, all Board members? Dr. McCarthy?
We are so proud of you. You're such an outstanding representative of our schools, and I hope that you come back each year to Topeka West and meet with current students and kind of help inspire them to achieve the heights you have. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Definitely will.
Could you tell us a little bit about any particular, I'm sure you love all your teachers, but any standouts, and if you have any family or friends here tonight that you'd like to introduce?
It's not technically a teacher, but Mr. Dick has definitely been a great support system. Actually, I couldn't attend Mr. Woods's mock self-interview, so I actually went to Mr. Dick to ask for some interview tips. And then also, my AP US History teacher, Mr. Perry, has definitely been one of... Because I actually consider him a friend more than a teacher, he's definitely been one of the best people I've ever met in my life. And the teachers and faculty at Topeka West are actually the biggest reason why I'm very sad to leave Topeka West.
Any questions or comments from Board members? The only one I would follow would be just congratulations. So thrilled to see this. You know what? As impressed as we are, and we are very impressed, but I have to tell you, I am not surprised.
Thank you.
Not surprised. For the two weeks that she spent with us over the summer at Westar, it was obvious, the talent. You know, talent usually isn't as obvious in our business. It's not like when two people line up to run a race, and you can really tell who's, you know, the most athletic. This was a K-4 talent that was very obvious. You discovered it, you've already put everything it takes into developing it, and so now, your third thing that you're required to do with your talent is use it to make the world a better place, and you already said that. So, congratulations, and we look forward to it.
Working at Westar maybe?
Just saying.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's one of my favorite highlights. The added Senior of the Month this year to really remind us part of the work of what it all ends to, getting kids to their next step in life. So with that next step in life, we are so excited. We have expanded, implemented and expanded a student internship program. Westar has an internship program, but we have really kind of looked at how do we employ our own staff right here in Topeka Public Schools? What jobs do we have, and how do we get our students into those jobs? So, one of our students that we are so proud of, Ms. Angelica Brown. Ms. Angelica Avi Brown, will you please come forward? Is it Avi? Ave. Let me get it right. It's Ms. Angelica Ave Brown. Please come forward. And then her mentor, who she's interning under, will say a few words, and I will let you know that Ms. Brown is truly an outstanding young lady who also runs multiple businesses that she gained the knowledge about, actually from through Topeka West. And through the businesses that she runs herself, she actually just purchased her first car. So we are excited about all that she's... You'll hear from her, but let's first hear from the person that she is interned from in our school.
Oh, Angelica. First of all, I want to say it's been awesome working with her. She has set the standard for this intern. I know she is the... It's me, audio visual. She's definitely set the standard for any student that wants to come in and do an internship. Above and beyond.
Can you tell your name and what you do and what you're doing as an intern?
Jessica Hodgson with the Service Center. I do a little bit of fire alarms, security, cameras, a bit of everything. And Angelica has definitely, as an intern, made my job much easier. I've taken some days off, and I've been able to give her a call, and she's on it. She's there. We've had a lot of good times. One thing I do want to do is recognize her mom again over here because... Oh, there she is. I can't see your face. You have a big old thing in front of you. But this woman here, Angelica speaks very highly of and has made her who she is today, and I have a lot of respect for her and her family. I can say, I guess, last but not least, I could talk for 20 minutes really about all the good times we've had, but she's taught me probably more about myself and staying positive and getting through every day and looking at the happier side of, well, this might be a problem, but, you know, you just need to look at it this way. And I give her a look. She's gonna go places. The sky's the limit, and I would love to work with her, and when she does leave and move on, take over the world with all the things she's gonna do, she will be greatly missed at the Service Center. Thanks, buddy.
My name is Angelica Ave Brown. I'm a student at Topeka West, a senior, and I'm in an internship with Ms. Jessica Hodgson at the Service Center Maintenance. I do a lot of work with security cameras, fire alarm systems, and doors. Recently, at Ross Elementary, I was there when we had a false alarm, and I had to evacuate the building. Good times. I learned that you have to put safety first, but when you realize it's a false alarm, you gotta get on it and figure out what the problem is. And at Ross Elementary, I put child guards on every pool station. Yes, ma'am.
It's true. When he called me from the playground and said, "Ms. Jessica, I'm on the playground."
The thing that I do is maintaining all the equipment at the Services Center. It's a lot of testing, say detectors, making sure that they're clean so we don't have a lot of false alarms, and if we do have false alarms, trying to get to the bottom of it, for example, ground faults. I've learned recently, ground faults can occur due to water, a lot of rain, due to exposed wires. So just how to locate, also addressable systems, so much easier than non-addressable because you can actually figure out where the problem is instead of having to clean every device individually. Today, we had a seminar with Simplex in Lenexa, Kansas, and it was an amazing experience. And I've learned that I would love to work more with fire safety, just because that's something close to my heart, because my mother worked in safety, and she's been an amazing example in that aspect. So hopefully, as I gain more knowledge, work with advanced technology, and make the school systems or anywhere I go a much safer place.
And any questions from Board members that you'd like to ask? You should know that Ms. Jessica commended her high school requirements in two years, so she enrolled in Washington Tech, so she will actually, on graduation, have her credential from Washington Tech and her high school diploma at the same time, which is our goal for any student to be in that area.
Ms. Kurt?
Well, I first became very curious, how did you, where did you learn all the knowledge about electrical... Did you get that at Washington Tech, or is that something you learned at home, or?
The beginning of this for me was when I was 14. Me and my brothers were just messing with each other, and I said I wanted to get a lawyer. And I expressed this to my mother, and she talked to some colleagues at the VA Hospital, and they recommended me getting into electronics. So when I was starting at 13, is when I volunteered at the VA Hospital, but when I was 15, is when I started volunteering with the electronics department. And I would go around the facility, work with fiber optics, install Wi-Fi systems, mountainous TVs, various things, and they recommended to me to take the electrical program and then move on to advanced technology. So all my experience started at the VA Hospital, and then I was able, with the help of Dr. Anderson, Topeka West Landon Middle School, to do this internship and just be that positive person and have these opportunities.
Ms. Johnson?
Just want to say congratulations for all that you are getting accomplished as well. Would you say something about entrepreneurial... Can you tell us a little more about that?
The... Okay, so junior year, I took entrepreneurship at Topeka West High School. Before then, because...
Where'd you do your summer partnership?
Yeah, I guess. I was with Westar this summer for two weeks through the program, and I was...
One of our best students too.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. So, when it comes to entrepreneurship for me, it began because at the time, I was either too young to have a job, or you'd fill out a resume because they'd say, "Looking for help," but then you weren't getting a response in return. So it started out with me having my own hair business, and that was mainly extensions. In Louisiana, all the time, I had hair appointments, and that's how I made my money. And then also, because at Landon Middle School, Ms. English, she was our sewing teacher, and she gave me this pattern for teddy bears, and she just let me run away with it, and then I asked for permission, can I start a business out of this? And she gave me permission, and so I started Simplex Ave Teddy Bears, which are handmade teddy bears sold at B.B. Long's Downtown on Kansas Avenue, if you're ever in the area. That was also business of mine. I also crocheted blankets. I love to do arts and crafts. Also, I had a cookie business with entrepreneurship at Topeka West, and my cookies always sold out. They're homemade chocolate chip, and then I also began making the peanut butter cookies thanks to one of my teachers at Topeka West. Amazing. So it was just a nice experience to have people support you. I was at the farmer's market selling my cookies, teddy bears, and then I began making handmade pillows. B.B. Long's is now where I sell, so it was a lot of people supporting me at that time.
The marketing piece coming out. Congratulations in just a while.
I appreciate it.
Quickly, what kind of card did you get? Ms. Brown, what kind of card did you get?
It's a Nissan Altima 98. It had $137,000 on it, and it's the same age as me.
Okay, well, so there's really not a whole lot left for me to say. Everyone's already said it, except for the fact that we are so proud of you. And just getting a chance to get to know you over the summer and to watch you, how curious you are. So just like we said to Ms. Dick, so the talent was very obvious. It's not always obvious in our game, so you get these really talented people. The deal is you have to discover what your talent is, figure out your own calling, and you've done that, and you've got to work to develop your talent. You've done that. Now, the third thing, once you develop them, you've got to turn around and make the world a better place. We hope you'll do that to Topeka Public Schools, or we hope you'll maybe even decide you want to come back and have a career. There are lots of places you can work.
Thank you.
I know.
I actually see Star Croix.
I do want to also mention that Mr. Robbins played an instrumental role in ushering Ms. Brown through this process and identifying her and matching her with the right person, and it really does take a team, so we are proud of her and our future interns. So now, we are time for the Attendance Award. Oh, my goodness, we are excited. We're gonna give this heavy trophy back up. For those that have not come to a board meeting, every month, we have a traveling trophy. The school with the highest attendance is the award winner. And so for this evening, we have the highest attendance for this past month is Scott Elementary. Ms. Lucero said, did she just call me?
Johannes, no.
Yeah, Ms. Lucero and anybody else from Scott Elementary. They had their shirts. Let's give them another applause. We gotta do this thing. You want to say that? You have some words of wisdom to share, and to share who you have with you.
All right, so I have the awesome, perfect attendance team right here in the yellow. They all work so hard, our counselor, our office para, and our community in schools, and they do everything you can think of to get kids to school. And then I thought, how cool to bring our very own one of our students that has perfect attendance all year and her mom. attendance all here, and her mom.
Would you like to say anything as a practice for public speaking?
Hello, my name is Jessica. I'm going to like the Ross Elementary.
That will be calling. I believe those are all of our awards for this evening, so we're gonna start off with our Scott team. Board members, can you join us so we can begin with our photos? Would you like to carry the heavy trophy? Extreme, yeah, do you? Do you want to walk all the way to the middle?
Okay. Sure felt, felt good. Our next item on the agenda is public comments, and we have none this evening, so we are ready to dispose of our business.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education through the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the Board President or the Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on the Board of Education.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Reverend Williams. Motion is seconded as special motion. What do you think on the consent? There is none, I guess we are good. I should recognize that today, this, on the consent calendar is the proclamation of the young child, which is basically our week in which we get to celebrate our youngest learners for childhood education services. Right as I say that, I see Ms. McKenzie walking in. So this is on the consent agenda, so that means we'll approve it now, but we'll have opportunities later on in other meetings to talk about this specifically. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the college and career readiness graduation update. I see Dr. Anderson.
At this time, Dr. Duncan is coming forward. She is our college and career advocate. As you may remember, she started with us in January. We recruited her from Washburn University, where she was a director of admissions. With that, is also Mr. Kip, our director of assessment and general director of assessment and demographics. That two duo team will talk a little bit about when is graduation for those that plan to go, as well as ACT. Remember, we gave all of our students an option to take the ACT, faced for by the district during the school day. With that ACT, that lets you know how many students participated overall. Keep in mind, June is still a date in which students can still take the ACT. So these aren't final numbers, and because of the June ACT, we really don't have the final cumulative scores. We also want to mention that Ms. Caspers, our director of college and career readiness, is also in the audience, as she's been celebrated with T-Cup throughout the course of the last month. I want to turn it over to Dr. Duncan and Mr. Kip.
Good evening. So this week officially marks our, kind of the start of our 30-day countdown until we all get to celebrate the success of the class of 2017 walking across the stage. So the first slide that we have gives all of the graduation dates. It starts on May 16th with the recognition at Cap City High School. It's not an official graduation ceremony, because those students will graduate with their home high school, but they do a special recognition ceremony at Cap City, then Thursday the 18th at Hope Street Academy. And then on Saturday, the 20th, we have Topeka High, Highland Park, and Topeka West graduating at the Expo Center. Also, new this summer, in order to be able to celebrate with our students, we need a little extra time over the summer to finish, so that the students and the families can celebrate together. We will have a summer graduation on June 30th.
So we want to mention that's the first time we're doing that. So this is our first time having a summer graduation, so it really is getting students who think, thought they weren't going to graduate and were going to give up, to come on back to school, because they now know they have a ceremony as well to look forward to.
Our next slide gives a graduation update, so you can see the numbers in the middle column, our actual graduation percentage for last year was 74.8, and we are projected to have an increase this year to 76.4. And part of what we're doing as initiatives, as we get closer to graduation, we're doing some strategic outreach for those students who are kind of on that bubble. So giving them phone calls, some we're doing home visits with, to give them that extra push, to say, "You only have 30 days left. You can kick it into high gear, and we can celebrate with you at the finish." And then we're also implementing a dropout task force, so for those students who only had a couple credits left, but for whatever reason decided that they didn't want to be in school, kind of doing some intentional outreach to them, as well as to say, "Hey, you can come back. We can get you in classes that you need to graduate, so that you can get that credential and then continue to move on and be successful."
I'll just briefly go over this slide. This is kind of our participation that we've had this year compared to last year. This would include all the ACTs that have been conducted since, really, October all the way to February. The yellow bars are last year's, and the darker bars are this year's. So the single test takers are those kids, the unique kids that just took it once. We do have a lot of kids in the districts that take it multiple times. On average, most kids take it 1.8 times, but about twice. So as you can see, we had quite a jump for this year in terms of offerings to those kids, even if they wanted to take it a second or third time. So it's a good trend, David.
Then last but not least, the last time we were here speaking, I talked about a student hiring event that we were planning to have in April. So it will be held next Wednesday. We're doing it both at Highland Park and Topeka West High Schools, and students are able to interview for some positions that are available within our district. And then we also have partnered with Shawnee County Parks and Rec for their summer positions as well, so students will be able to interview with them. Also, in the upcoming year, we hope to expand our paid internships, like the one Ms. Brown has, and get more students interning within our district. And then, just for your knowledge, our next ACT national date is Saturday, June 10th, and the registration date is coming up soon on May 5th.
Ms. Russo, can you go back to the prior slide, and then we'll open it up for questions for you? We do want to make sure that you're aware and continue to acknowledge that, you know, there was concern about the ACT scores dropping, concern about the number of tests we were offering. So for the purpose of, since we're videoing this as well, if the screen could come through clearly, 574 kids took it last year as single test takers, 657 took it this year. But then students who took it more than one time, 743 last year, 900 students took the test this year, in terms of students that took it over and over again. And really, we initially thought, well, we could just have the first set of numbers there. But Mr. Kip made a good point earlier today, to say, "It really shows that kids are taking it two, three, four times in order to really get a much more competitive score." We also embedded the ACT during the school day as a class, and had a variety of other strategies, including an ACT boot camp. So we plan to do that again. Additionally, through Ms. Wallace and the title department, she's provided staff development and sent teachers to Columbia for ACT tutoring and prep. So we embed ACT skills in our average English, math, and all of our classes, just as part of taking that class. So those are things we do want to at least mention in this piece. We were, people were concerned about scores dropping. Right now, from what we're seeing, the drop is minimal, and we're not sure if it will be a drop, because the June test date is still before us. But the drop is minimal, meaning 0.8%, somewhere between 0.8% or so. It's, am I correct, Mr. Kip, in making that statement?
Actually, the latest numbers are showing about a 0.4 drop, so...
So with that many more students, when we start talking about 300, 400 students and getting more kids access, the scores did not drop as significantly as people were afraid they would drop. And again, as of after June, then perhaps they won't drop at all. So I think this is a great way to move forward with offering more opportunity to our kids for college and career readiness. Questions from board members on any of the slides that we have for you this evening?
What, those are gross numbers. What's the percentage of kids that could take the test? I mean, usually are juniors and seniors, I would think.
Yeah, the majority are going to be juniors and seniors. I can, we didn't really illustrate it graphically, but there was a huge jump in the number of juniors that took it this year versus last year. So now, those kids have another opportunity to come next year to improve their school or to take it again. We had some kids take it six times already, trying to get to that, you know, for scholarship purposes and...
So, I mean, it's about 1,000 kids a grade, roughly, right?
Yes.
It shrinks as you get up there, but, you know, 1,000 of 2,000 for 11th, 12th grade, I mean, that's approaching 50%. That's a very good percentage.
Very good, impressive participation. And I want to give a shout out to the counselors that really work with these kids to align their career goals, to what, you know, how important the ACT is, and amongst other things, the FAFSA and all that stuff. But they really did a great job of lasering in on certain kids that really could benefit from this. And so it wasn't just, "Let's give you a test." It was really targeted and aligned to their goals.
I'm most impressed with their increase in graduation rates. So can you speak a little bit more in depth on what you guys did? 1.6% is a big jump.
Sure, yeah.
A lot of kids that are going to graduate across the state. Life is better with the different ones.
Absolutely. The official numbers won't really be released until October, so this is just a prediction based on mathematical, historical stuff. The graduation formula does take into account dropouts, but it also takes into account graduates. And it's numerator, denominator sort of thing, so if you can reduce the number of dropouts and increase the number of graduates, which is what Dr. Duncan was trying to talk about with the dropout task force, really giving those kids a sense that they can accomplish this and meet their credit requirements. I think a lot of them may have got off the rails a little bit, so these task forces really come in. We target, we talk about every single kid in these meetings to see what he or she really needs in terms of support. So given those numbers, each school had their own kind of senior spreadsheet that has been monitored throughout the year, and those numbers were based on those senior spreadsheets in terms of their predictions at the schools.
So I don't see a high school principal. I was going to call one of them up. So this year, the new pieces that we've done this year, that dropout task force, is literally a couple people going to someone's house, knocking at their door, or going to Hy-Vee, or going to their jobs, saying, "How can we get you back in?" We have found kids that have dropped out because of work. And so the career fair, we are employing students, and we said, "If they come back to school, they can apply for a job with us and we'll help them have work." I mean, so just really thinking creatively. The senior spreadsheet is a new piece that we've done, and we implemented it in August, September. And so every, I'm sorry, October. And so every month, Mr. Kip, myself, the principals, the assessment staff, and Mrs. Wallace meet with the high school principals and talk about every single student. Next week, I'll be with the attendance person from Cap City, and I see a Cap City person up front, but I'll be with the attendance person from Cap City, and she's going with me, because she knows the city far better than I do, on home visits. So, you know, it'll be, it may be the superintendent coming, a principal coming. Those have made a huge difference. So the dropout, not claiming dropouts, has had a really big impact. But the other piece is just monitoring it every, literally every month, and asking kids, "How can we help them?" Sometimes their classes are such that they are taking classes above what they have the ability to actually perform well in, or they take too many classes. So if we're talking about it every month, we can say, "Okay, maybe five AP classes isn't enough, it's too much." Because you do have some high-level kids that aren't necessarily on track because of some other kinds of things that we need to catch early. Lastly, I also want to say, our central office staff, anybody from central office that's in here, has a mentee, and those students are seniors, and their job is to get them to graduate. So Dr. Duncan gave us a report that the majority of our students that we've mentored in central office are all graduating and going to college and/or have a career placement already.
So a quick question for me, kind of along the same lines. This is an unfair question, though. Ask you to make a generalization, but in the end, it seems like for most of the kids who are on the brink, or just a lot of the kids who are willing to drop out, they're plenty capable, they are that close, there's some little thing that in the grand scheme of things, if they could, you know, see life from a, you know, 70-year-old person who's incredibly wise, they'd think, which I, I, so using as an example. But they would think that, okay, this is a small thing, I could actually make it in your phone call, or you're showing up at their house or their job, just kind of makes a difference for them, and they're right back on track with that small amount of effort.
Correct. Some of them, honestly, senioritis is kicking in, plus it's nice weather outside, so they're like, "I'm at school." Some of the classes, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, may not necessarily be requirements, but there are extra electives that they're taking. So they're slacking a little bit, so having that extra touch, whether it's for me, a counselor, their mentor work, they have one through central office, can kind of help them kick it back into gear and kind of say, "You don't have that many more weeks to go. You have a plan for after graduation. We just need to actually get you to graduation," so that then you can go ahead and be successful. And just letting them know that we're here to help them and that we want to help them.
Additional questions for Dr. Duncan or Mr. Kip? Presentation, love to see progress and look forward to the October report. So we have one, one action item on the agenda, item 20.1, and it is the resolution for school closure for the elementary schools, which we discussed with our public hearing as we will call in the last board meeting. We had our Saskatchewan required rationale and everything laid out in the meeting prior. We also did that again during the public hearing. It's now time for us to take action on Resolution 17-2, according to Bishop and Shangron Minter Schools, which is the second half of the ongoing construction of the new Jardine. Any discussion or questions about the resolution that we had before us? And if not, we'd be ready to entertain a motion. Thank you, Williams. Thank you, Dr. Nicholson. The motion is seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I know we've got to talk this one to death. There's nothing, I think, already looked at. Okay, so the motion passes you now, Mr. Lee. Our next item on the agenda, our only discussion item for the evening, is the big one that we look forward to every single year, and it is the report from DCAC with their recommendations and findings from their study papers. So I see, I see Dr. Ransong, okay. I see our representative from DCAC on his way to, as he comes forward, the one thing I will say, as a former DCAC board member, or DCAC member, is that in every single year that I have been on the board, and this is year 10, DCAC has studied something for us. We have either, you know, taken either in part or in whole parts of their recommendations and evidence, so we look forward to great... So we look forward to great recommendations that we can always use, and no pressure, so go ahead.
Thanks. So my name is Daniel Foad. Hopefully, I look a little familiar to, seen the number you over the past few years. I've really enjoyed my time in DCAC, and I am going to be the, the president next year. So you'll be seeing more of me, and I'll be working with you a little more closely. So I'm here talking about the first of the DCAC study committee reports on college and career readiness, the K through twelve approach. So hopefully, you've had a chance to, to look at that. I'll keep it short, short and sweet. I will say, we, it's changed a lot since the fall. When we first started looking at this, a lot of things had, were, were, we didn't know quite as much, we'll say. What we did have, we looked very closely at the Kansas Department of Education recommendations. That was something that was presented to us by you folks, and so we knew to, to look very closely at that. And we luckily found that it meshed pretty closely with what we were looking at, looking for as a group of parents and community members. From there, we reached out to the community, some of the, the local resources that we knew. We visited Washburn campuses, Washburn Tech, spoke with some of the folks there. And one of the things we were, were hearing back, you know, we had these opportunities, and there was a difference between maybe college, you know, being, being able to, to go to college, being, you know, allowed to go to college, being accepted into college, and truly being prepared once you were there. And just that, that potential disconnect was something that we were hoping to see, to see, looked at at the, at the school level, at the, the K through twelve level. And that was something, you know, what were the things that we could look at? You know, obviously, we have a lot of students who go on to these opportunities. And so one of the recommendations was those, those soft skills, the things that were going to allow someone to have success at the college level. We had some numbers about the number of students requiring remedial classes in both English and math, both at two and four year. And the numbers were, I believe, was between eighteen and sixty-one percent of folks. And, and it's a little, a little greater at the two-year college. But, you know, what are the things that we can do to, to better prepare our students? The other thing that, that changed as we went, went on in the year in our, our studies, and, you know, we're talking to more and more people, well, we had a strategic plan that came out. And that was obviously very late in the process when we were preparing our document. And that was another thing that we were happy to see, I will say, because it is showing the, the work that was, all the thought that was going into this process. And I will say, the, we were looking a little more at the, how things were actually implemented. You know, so we, we have a lot of really great goals that we read about right here, you know, in the, in that strategic plan document. And so we were, that was one of the, so we tried to outline a few of the things that we were trying to, excuse me, trying to accomplish. One of those things was the communication aspect. So obviously, we talked about what are the best ways to communicate with students, families. You know, so that's something that was addressed, you know, in that, in that strategic plan document. But again, the way that that is implemented, so we were hoping to see, you know, a lot of feedback, you know, how, you know, effective are these methods, trying a lot of different ways. Obviously, we know some messages need to be heard multiple times in order to be, to be truly heard. And this is something that, going back in to middle school, to elementary school, because some of these opportunities that folks have later in, in high school, they really start early on. There are tracks that, that need to be followed in order to get to some of those higher level math classes, some of those AP classes, some of those honor classes. You have to be looking in middle school to make sure you've started the, you know, the right math classes. And if students aren't aware, if that message never gets home to the parents, then folks are going to be starting off on the wrong foot, even at a very, you know, talking about something way down the line, many, many years. But, but really, that starts so early, and that's why it is that K through twelve approach. And so one of the things we were hoping to, to get that, that message to those, those middle schoolers. And then, once folks were started on those tracks, making sure that folks had the opportunity to shift, if that, if that was, you know, give them all available opportunity to be flexible. Because not everyone knows exactly what they want to do, you know, when they're a sixth grader, a seventh grader, an eighth grader. And so if someone didn't get that jumpstart, you know, towards what, what could become their goals later, again, just allowing them that flexibility to, to, maybe it's to catch up, you know, maybe, maybe it's summer school, but I mean, there, obviously, that's, that's something that, that folks will have to look at, of the specifics of the curriculum, you know, what those options might be. But again, just giving folks the chance, the opportunity to, to make the most. And then a final note I had here is, is obviously getting people thinking about that as early as possible. You know, when we talk about, you know, what, what career you might want as a kindergartner, well, it's, the conversation you have with someone that's young is certainly a little different than, than a sophomore or junior. But, but you do start that conversation early, and there are obviously ways of getting folks thinking about that. And, and by starting that early, that's something that we can hopefully get everyone prepared and let them know what the options are, you know, and prepare them for them once, once they get to the point where they need to make that choice. And certainly, if anyone has any questions or comments, I would be, be happy to field those.
Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Bo, I, around elementary schools, I don't, how old are your kids in elementary or...
Yeah, are elementary.
I've seen lots of emphasis on, yes, you can go to college, or you can graduate, and things like that. There's signs up, and, and teachers are talking about that a, a lot. I mean, it, was the committee pretty satisfied with, I mean, there are parents out there that, who never even graduated from high school, and the thought of a child going to, going further on just doesn't come from the parent to the child. So, are you seeing that at current?
We have seen some of that. And one thing that, you know, is a little tricky, just in our group, in our meetings, we're already talking with people who are, you know, very involved, who are, you know, looking for those things. And so it's the, the preaching to the choir, well, you know, I've seen that, certainly. I hope that some of those kids have too. I mean, obviously, that's where most of that message is. It's not necessarily something that, that the school is, you know, paying money to print off and send home, but, but it more comes through in the conversations that are going to be had. So, so yes, I mean, you know, I do have a kindergartner, I mean, so we haven't exactly talked about that there. But that was one thing that, a statistic we, we had was that of the new jobs being created, so brand-new jobs, that ninety-five percent of the new jobs created were going to require post-secondary education. And, and so again, looking forward for, you know, kids who are in elementary school right now, you know, what, what kind, what are they going to be, you know, finding? Obviously, that's going to be very important. And we also talked about the, you know, getting folks on the, the right track for them. I mean, when I talked about, you know, having that flexibility to shift one direction or the other, you know, even once you've started, if someone decides that that's not for them, you know, there are great opportunities. Again, I mentioned we went to, I'll use Washburn Tech just because that's the one, you know, we, we visited there, of folks could have a job literally at graduation. I mean, I, I know you folks know this, but, but, I mean, just, just know that those opportunities exist, and we need to get the, the word out early enough. I mean, because again, these, these are big life decisions, so we have to make it as easy as possible for, for those sophomores, juniors, freshmen. Again, you know, how far back do you go? Well, I mean, you don't have to, you don't, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast decision, you know, in, in elementary school, but again, getting that, communicating that message across, so folks know that, what the options are and what is available to them.
Thank you for what you shared with us this evening. You said that you all started your process, and we, you know, it started before we actually released the strategic plan. So did you go back and address some of those concerns as you saw what emerged of strategic plan?
We did. And I, I will admit that we were actually pretty far along before we looked at that. The good news was, was again, like, like I, I said, that the, the Kansas Department of Education just had a very brief, you know, outline of what, what they were defining as college and career readiness, and what, what some of the things that they would look for in that were, that, that those seemed to, to mesh up. I see a lot of that was implemented in the, in the strategic plan. And, and when we did go through the strategic plan, you know, and it's, it's a lot of pages and, you know, a lot of, a lot of minutia of, you know, who's doing what, but a lot of those things were on the right track. I mean, that was definitely the consensus of our group, was that we liked the direction that we're going. Even some of the things we've heard here tonight about, you know, the mentoring program for graduation, and, and again, some of the work that's been done for, for college and career readiness. I mean, we definitely think you folks are on the, the right track. I mean, these are, we're very happy that, that these things are going in that direction. And that's again, why it was more about the implementation, like, what, what are the details that, you know, we can all agree that this is quite important, and again, just trying to get those, those things done to, you know, for the students.
Mr. Bo, do you want to say?
Not a question, but a, a comment, I suppose, and just to thank you for the work you and your committee have done. I know DCAC is sometimes, I find it rewarding, I, I served several years, and it was, it was good to get a report every month from the superintendent and figure out what's going on in the district and be involved in your child's school. So thank you to you and for your leadership in this committee, and to rest your committee members for putting in this report.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would echo and definitely say thank you so very much, Mr. Bo. We look forward to, to seeing more of, see Dr. Ratsong.
I'm not a behind-the-pony person, just can't do it, can't do it. I'd also add, anecdotally, for what Daniel was saying too, building administration makes such a big difference. I know when my daughter was in middle school, Mr. Hare was at Jardine, that was his first year, and when we went to a, a meeting with him, he said, you know, I kind of feel like she's coasting. You know, she's doing really well in school, she's kind of coasting. Is that what you feel too? And I said, yeah, kind of, maybe, I don't know, what do you think? And, and so he had suggested maybe she should go ahead in math. So she did. She, and she convinced a friend of hers, and they went to the high school then, and during eighth grade in math, they were the first two people from Jardine that we knew of at the time to, to do that. And then now my son is an eighth grader, and I believe there are twenty-two students at Jardine that go to the high school in the mornings to take classes. And it was really Mr. Hare that had, that had kind of pushed and considered and given ideas to that. And so I give him a huge amount of, of credit for paying attention to a kid who wasn't in any trouble, she's not a troublemaker, but just said, you know what, I bet she could be doing more. And I just, I thank him for that. So I think building administration, when it comes to college and career readiness, can really make a huge, huge impact and huge difference. And they are, obviously, doing that. But I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about physical education. We're going to start, though, because I don't know about you, but we've been here since six-thirty or so, let's take just a second, everyone stand up, just for a second, just for a second. Stretch your arms up. There you go. But I coach soccer too, so you know. We go the other side, there you go. All right, maybe shake your fingers out, still doing the public speaking. Okay, go ahead and sit down now. We just sent a rush of oxygen going to our brains. And so hopefully, you'll feel a little refreshed, and for the five or 10 minutes that I had, you'll be able to take in more information, maybe do a little bit more comprehension. And that's what we're actually going to discuss. So we're, we get to talk about physical education, first and foremost. I didn't do this by myself, so this year I had the honor of being the DCAC president, and I'm also the chair of this particular subcommittee. I've got Nikki here that is one of my committee members, and a couple of others I had planned on being here, but they're not. I actually have a pretty robust committee, and, and they're phenomenal, so I just get to kind of sit back and relax. But as we go on, as we are thinking about this, I actually wanted to start recommendations first, which is a little unusual for me. And then I'm going to backtrack just a little bit and talk a little bit about the literature and support, about how we came to these recommendations. And then finally, we did a survey here, it was a very small survey, we just looked at principals and the PE teachers, and I'll talk to her a little bit about what those surveys suggested. Number one here, this is, these are recommendations, and we broke them into kind of low and no cost, and then shoot for the moon, what would we really like to see happen? Actually, our primary recommendation is this one right here. If you did nothing else, this is what we want you to do. Right? And this is to move recess for all elementary school students, all, prior to lunch. And we'll talk a little bit about the support, and it's a huge amount of research and support that says why that should happen. It costs potentially nothing, some jostling, but huge, huge benefits. So just keep that in mind. Nothing else, that's what we want. The second one's a little bit more difficult, perhaps, and, and each building's a little differently, and a lot of this is anecdotal, based on a survey, but allow the teachers to monitor their classroom time. So some of the teachers said, you know, we are to the minute, we have to have our pages turning, if we're a first-grade class, we have to have our pages turning at the exact same time, or our principal might walk by and go, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. The problem with that, and we understood that the basis of time on task, and that you want to stay on track, and you want to be, but the problem was, is that if you work with first graders, or second graders, or seventeen-year-olds, like I have at my house, they don't think and do things at the same time. They need the occasional brain break, and we need to trust our teachers to know when they need those brain breaks, when they need to stand up for a minute and stretch, when they need to just sit back and think, because that's what they need. And so the other recommendation we have is to allow the teachers to monitor their classroom time. Obviously, with maybe perhaps some exceptions, but for the more, allow them to take those brain breaks, or even those short physical activities, when they see fit, when they see that their classrooms need it. Talk to our physical education teachers, they're, boy, they're wonderful folks. If you've never taken the time to go and sit and chat with them, wow, I mean, they are passionate about what they do. I mean, I kind of feel that way about all teachers, but, you know, get to know them, and they have some great ideas. And I don't know that they always feel like they're supported, and that they always get to express those really good ideas, but allow them and talk to them about what's going to fit their students, because they do have a curriculum, and they do have outcomes that they also need to meet. They're not just there for extra, and I think sometimes that's what they feel like. So increase the rigor of PE class activities. Don't withhold PE, I can say it again with underlines and big bold headings, don't withhold PE for discipline or missing work. Even though we set the standard and is actually suggested in there that that's not supposed to be happening, what we discovered in our survey, go figure, it's still happening. Classroom teachers pulling their kids because their math homework's not done, classroom teachers not doing it because they didn't walk down the hall quietly enough. So they pull them back in and have them walk down the hall again. That's time that they're supposed to be in their PE class, and that was problematic. So consider allowing more student choice for buy-in. This was actually research-based, talking about, we understand that there are outcomes, there are multiple ways usually to meet particular outcomes, and so allow students have a little bit of choice, because we know that if you have choice, you're more likely to buy into the activity, more people want to participate. And so that was one of the suggestions that came through. So we say lower no cost. This is more low cost, because we know anytime you do professional development or take out a professional day, you're taking away from something else that you could be doing professional development on. We also know that we've spent a lot of money over the past few years on things like Cagan, and we know that the Cagan activities, there are some that are more physically active than others. So one of the things that we suggested, it wouldn't cost anything, we're already doing it, but maybe be promoting some of those more physically active Cagan activities, and reminding teachers that there are some different activities that they could be doing. Teachers are, they're reporting some really great things, and they talk a lot about brain breaks, but maybe it's encouraging all teachers. I think we have a lot of teachers that are doing great things, but maybe encouraging more teachers, so at all levels, not just elementary, but also middle school and high school. They get just as fidgety. So just some of that encouragement, whether it's through professional development, when it's, you, in, in... it's entire TPS 501, or building, or at some point in time just go, hey, this is important, they need a little bit of time too. This one's not exactly a physical activity, but one of the things that we had talked about when we created these questions was also that impact that nutrition has, the whole body wellness. And so this came through in the survey, some of the PE teachers and principals were saying, hey, there's one thing about physical activity, there's another part about this though, and that is the nutrition that we're doing. And so one of the low no cost, and it got a lot of groans, I'll, I'll say when we first, when we first recorded this, at DCAC, pushing healthy food options for snacks. So this would include class parties and it would include celebrations, there was the groan, you know, but including the elimination of junk food isn't a reward. So handing out Smarties because you're such a smart kid, handing out Jolly Ranchers because you stood in line really well, handing out, so you get the point, that there might be other alternatives to look. We understand though, that it's inexpensive. Jolly Ranchers are not very expensive in comparison to something potentially else. So it would take some creative thought, but there you go. The last one came from some of the PE teachers and principals, and this was, offer a modest stipend for teachers that offer before and after-school activities. Some buildings do, but a lot don't. And so those teachers are being asked to volunteer their times before after-school particular programs. When we asked, we did not ask them to declare which schools were which, so we are just, again, that's, that's based on the survey and anecdotal evidence. So, but I do think that when they're being asked to do things above and beyond what they're being paid to do, that it'd be nice. And they said, they did said, it wouldn't take much, just something to say thanks. Major commitments or policy changes. So these are perhaps big things. The first one, purchase chairs that allow for movement. Cap City already has this, if you've been, and I'm sure you've all ever been to Cap City, if you all have been to Cap City, you should absolutely go over there, it is amazing over there. It is amazing. And one of the things that they have there are they have a variety of types of seating options. And so they have chairs there, they have bars that swing, they have chairs that look like yoga balls with flat edges, but they have things for people that, that want to listen and want to pay attention, but just need to move, standing desks. Some of the other schools have things that are also similar, but I just noticed at Cap City that it was throughout. And so, you know, if I was going to make a large, or we were going to make a large recommendation, it'd be looking at that beyond one building or a couple of spots throughout, and that, but that of course would be expensive. Add more recess. There's a lot of evidence that talks about the support of recess or adding more physical activity time. But the reason we put this under major commitments or major changes is because we know that right now, every minute is accounted for at the school. So those minutes have to go someplace. So if you take more time to do physical activity and recess, then that's taking away from time that you're doing math, or reading, or science, or, or something. A lot of the research would support though, that more time that kids have to play and process, they're actually more focused and they spend more time on task, and that you don't need as much time than doing those other types of things. So it would be one thing we would recommend, kind of looking more, and again, these are why they're major commitments and policy changes and not just asking you to move recess before lunch. And then I, I wanted to acknowledge, if you've been to Peak High, you know that they do actually get some exercise, go down those stairs. And then just simply adding more opportunities for movement during study hall or advisor base, every school calls it something different, so we just, we kind of played it safe, at the middle school and high school levels. And finding a way that they can build some of that camaraderie and physical movement, but also just breaking up their day a little bit. Again, middle school and high school, they don't have as many opportunities, except for walking between classes, to get some of that out. And everyone needs an opportunity to kind of refresh their brain. So some of the literature, I really, I put one of these, this is actually the entire document from the National Food Services Management Institute, and I, I kept trying to think and break things up, and I thought, no, this really does kind of pinpoint our major recommendation and some of the things that, that were found. So, this is the move recess, move recess, that's what I'm asking you to do. Why? So some of the evidence that they found wasted less food, so consumed more calcium and protein, as much as 35% more. In other words, they're eating their fruits and vegetables, they're not in such a hurry to get out to recess, which is, which is what happens now. Decrease the number of nurse visits for things like headaches and stomach aches after recess. If they were calmer and ready to get to work immediately, instead of needing more cooldown time. Increased classroom time on task, and you kind of read along with me. Decreased discipline referrals, so allowing them to have that extra time and the time in different, less supervision needed in cafeteria. Why? They were tired and they were hungry, so they ate and they behaved better. Fewer accidents during lunch break, they littered less. I mean, so all of these things kind of culminate into, why not? So, and I, again, we, I say it's a low no cost, but I recognize that it's not the case. You have big buildings that still are using really small cafeterias, it takes some juggling around, but at least for a major consideration to have buildings think about how they can make this a possibility. So some of our surveys, I said, we asked principals and PE teachers to respond. So we had 42 individuals, we had one individual who responded the other, so if you're wondering who the other is, it's a PE teacher who also teaches math, so they put themselves in the other category. Most of the buildings really felt that they were doing a pretty good job of, of what they were trying to do. So I just tried to highlight a couple of the things. So, you know, do your non-PE classroom teachers use physical activities? Now again, it's asking them to think about what they think the building is doing. And so for the most part, they thought, well, I, you know, I'm not really quite sure, but a lot of them said no, but the ones that said yes, a lot of them talked about brain breaks, so about half of them responded that it, that they did think that the classroom teachers were doing something, they just couldn't usually name it, other than, I know they do Go Noodle, that's a popular one, or, or just they knew that they did brain breaks in general. So I took those, it's pretty classic. So oftentimes in PE literature, they're going to talk about what is good PE, and they talk about the amount of time that you spend sweating, which I know is a very pleasant topic, but that's what you're talking about, the rigor of your activity that you're doing. So not just walking around the gym, which is still physical activity, it's still something, but the amount of time that they're actually being rigorous to actually promote some of the health benefits. So you see, most of them are two to three times a week, which is good actually, because a lot of the schools, that's, that's, those who do PE. So in general, what we're, what we really found in the survey are that they're doing a wide variety, a lot of it's just not consistent from building to building, which is a lot of things that we talk about, we've got several buildings. The activities that they do have, some have girls on the run, some have after-school activities, some have groups that come on, you know, onto their grounds, so there's a wide variety of things that they're, they're doing. This was a question, because we were, we were kind of curious, we're saying, oh, middle school and high school, what do we do with them? Where do we put physical activity? And so we were trying to figure out maybe during their study hall, if there's a time, some of the buildings do intramurals, not all of it, or, or usually once a week, not all the kids get those, because they have other activities that they have to do. So I know at one building, that if they want to participate in intramurals, it means they can't participate scholar, for example. And as a choice, they would have to make, you know, physical activity versus, you know, brain activity. And so we asked, you know, hey, is this a possibility? Most actually said they didn't think they knew how to fit it in. I'm not entirely convinced that there would be no way to, to do that. But a lot of them did say that they're, that they currently didn't and they weren't sure how to do that. So those were the basics that we found from the study. If you look at international, international studies, you know, they're doing some very interesting things, where they're actually spending less time in school and a lot more time in recess. And some of the benefits from that, same type of things that we're talking about on, you know, time on task and focus, and giving kids a lot of opportunities, a lot of recess benefits are about social, social interactions, giving them time to relate to each other, giving them time to figure out the world around them, as well as obviously then time to play and get their brains going. All right, so at this point in time, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Nikki can.
Thank you, Tracy. A quick question, so how often do elementary kids go to PE?
It depends on the grade, and so they can go, and then anywhere from 20 minutes to 43 minutes.
And does it happen daily? Or it's very basic?
Depends on the, it depends on the grade, two to three times.
My first grade daughter goes twice, my fourth grade son goes, but she goes every day, and my son goes every other day. But she has two recesses, he has two recesses, his periods are longer.
And a lot of the PE teachers suggested that they didn't want, for the kindergarten and first grade, they didn't want longer periods of time, but they wanted more, so five days a week for shorter, just because of focus. And that's actually what the PE teachers, PE teachers were recommending, just because of focus.
It'd be interesting to look at those days that kids are doing PE, like for your son, where he's got PE two or three days a week, and if there's an increase in problems during those days, they're not having that kind of physical release that PE provides.
Right, like, like discipline referrals or anything like that, right? And we did not, we did look to the same.
It'd be more complex, but interesting to see that.
That would be.
I mean, it's, what's great is even still on the days that they have PE, they have recess. I'm pretty proud of the fact that we are sophisticated enough now not to, you know, take away recess and use it as a disciplinary tool like they used to when I was a kid.
They still do though, so.
Well, not in that school, I mean, they know better.
A lot of schools reported that their, the general policy was, we don't take away recess, we don't take away gym, but the anecdotal evidence we heard from the teachers were, yeah, they do, it still happens. Or they'll allow them to go out to recess, but they have to sit on the wall. And so it's still, so which, which is one way to get rid of, I guess, so that they're still accepting that. A lot of schools are also different, so most of them reported very similar things, so either two recess, some schools, once they get to fourth and fifth grade, drop to one recess, that's the after lunch or the before lunch recess, and that's, that's the recess time. And so it's, it's a wide variety between the two. And if we had a recommendation, obviously, we're going to suggest more recess is always going to be better than less.
So do you feel for, from the PE teachers, how much rigor was there, how much sweating and deep breathing and?
Two to three times a day is what they were reporting, and they said that they were, they felt that two to three times a week, sorry, that they were rigorous. So induced sweating induced behavior that they thought was a fairly high level of rigor.
So they are getting that?
That is what is being reported, yes. I think it would also depend on, you know, they have the different outcomes that they have to do, and so certain outcomes are going to involve more physical, actual physical activity. So I know that when they're doing things like the cup stacking, they're probably not sweating. But it meets a different outcome that they have, they have to meet.
Climbing the roof.
Climbing the roof, yeah.
I noticed one of your recommendations too was to have teachers and administrators, et cetera, set examples.
And write in the paper.
Yeah, and, and I thought that was, that's a great idea. And we currently on our health insurance committee and also, yeah, our health council, have those recommendations in place. Boy, if you see an adult when you're a kid exercising regularly, watching your weight, I think that, that's a big deal for that kid.
Right, and so in the paper, what he's talking, in the, in the paper, that was one of the recommendations that we actually made. And that stemmed from the survey itself, that was, there were a few responses there that said, we really need to support our teachers and make sure our teachers are also healthy, and how do we support them? Because being a teacher, you stand a whole bunch, but you don't necessarily exercise. So how can we support them and allow them to be able to exercise when they're done, or find a way to get them involved in something at the, so at the school, so that we can create an entire healthy atmosphere? So which is, is great, and I, I know that there's a lot of truth behind that. So that would actually be looking at recommendations such as, you know, kind of the standing gel mats to help alleviate some of those, the pain that you can have when you stand all day, so that they could actually be more energized later on, so that maybe they would take on more healthier behaviors, or encouraging them to, there's a lot of evidence too, that teachers that play with their kids, the kids get a lot more out of that. They have better behavior, they get a better connection with those teachers. But that's asking teachers to take up that recess time that they normally use for other things, which we also acknowledge.
Any additional questions or comments for Dr. Ratsong? Darren, and just as we did for Mr. Will, thank you so much for your work. This, you are wrapping up your presidential year. We appreciate all of the work that went into this report, incredibly well done. I did have one question, just to make sure I get it for my own records and so I can look back. I didn't find that we had a copy electronically of the first report to.
Well, there is, I'm not in your book, but I'm sorry. They presented it at the CAC, but you didn't have a copy for the.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so yeah, well that, definitely thank you so much for all of your hard work and for the. Yeah, so before we, that concludes everything on our agenda, there are a couple of quick things that I do want to bring to the board's attention. Ms. Austin, would you mind giving us a quick summation of the things that are going on at the Welcome Center?
So our TPS Welcome Center, we're going to have two evenings with extended hours, and that's going to be next week on April 27th, and then on May 10th, and the hours will be open from 5 to 7. And what we're trying to do is, we are trying to target any new student to, to public schools, but also our preschool and our kindergarten families. And we've partnered with the Shawnee County Health Department and Grace Med, and so they'll get help with online registration, they'll get help with preschool information, what they need to qualify for preschool. They'll, they will also, the Health Department's going to provide immunizations, and Grace Med's going to have dental screenings, and they'll also help the families get signed up for childcare. And so then we'll have all of our people there with migrant services, law food service there, we'll have our budget, our business department on how to pay fees and that kind of thing. Demographics is going to be there, so we've got everybody lined up. We have a short timeframe till April 27th, so we'll be pushing all this out on all of our media, so if you can talk it up, that would be great, and I've asked the principals to push it out on their communication, the tools that they have, so that we can get plenty of people there, so. So those are two things that are coming, and then they'll, we'll probably organize some back in August too. May 10th.
Thank you. So with that, we are at the point on our agenda that's board member comments, and to defy what we usually do to break convention here, we're going to start with Dr. Morrison.
I haven't had time to. I don't, I don't do the.
I read an article recently that's talking about advanced placement classes and was talking about AP computer science, which I did not know about, much about, and is actually one AP class that we don't offer yet, which surprised me a little bit, and it occurs to me that that is one that really might attract a different group of students that need extra rigor, and I think would be an excellent way to pull them into a secondary education too. So I asked Mrs. Wallace to kind of look into what, what it would take for us to, to add that, and I don't know if the board would be interested in surveying students and kind of getting level of interest. I think, I think it would be a good thing for us to consider.
Couple of things, one, I attended Investment Committee, and we discussed the scholarship that was given to Highland Park High School kids. We think we're due about $20,000 a year in, forever, assuming the investments do well, that we can contribute to the scholarship for those Highland Park kids, so we should probably. Also got to speak to the Chase Middle School added classes last Friday, also fun experiences. I know some of you are going to Florida, but it was fun to meet these kids, 20 in each of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes, they were filled with enthusiasm and optimism for futures and this could be as with them. I would, I, after listening to Dr. Ratsong, I think we have to look at what feasibility, I don't know, Dr. Anderson encouraged you about how hard it would be to. Dr. Anderson encouraged me about how hard it would be to have an early recess during lunch break or a class or two in a seat. The opinions, I don't know what it takes, but we hear these, these reports and just want to have a call to action that we examine some of the recommendations, especially since that was the primary one, make some assignments and figure out how feasible that is to... We could see the good things that are going on before this goes.
Okay. The only comment I really have is to just toss out there again, how proud and wonderful it is to be associated with this district when I get a chance to go to all these other places. So, you know, as you know, I get to serve on the board of directors for the Kansas Association of School Boards. So at our last board meeting in Alatha, we were discussing the districts that had won Magda Awards. I don't know who brought that up, but at this board meeting, but as the districts who were asked, you know, folks were asked to raise their hand if your districts ever won a Magda Award. There were three of us who raised our hands. That's of the 13 people on this board of directors. No one had ever won a first place more than once. Actually, one other district there, that's it, had ever won a first place Magda Award. So it was just, again, you know, it's fun to look at the people from some districts who shall remain nameless when I get to tell them. Well, you know, we've actually won three first place awards and honorable mention and all these great things are happening. Oh, you did a bond initiative. Oh, we did one too. We did it without a tax increase. It's great to watch their faces kind of sink. So, not all. So mainly that horrible, I guess, self-congratulatory, ramble stream of consciousness was a way to try to thank our administration and our teachers. And I want to thank you guys just for being such a forward-looking board. Especially being so progressive and always looking at what's good for kids and figuring out ways. And while we were in the dregs of it, 2011, the largest company in the state, this board was still making decisions and trying to figure out what can we do for kids that's good. You can now see the results. So thank you all and definitely thank you, you know, the great things that you all have been a part of and all the great things that we will do. I'm even more excited about the future. So with that, I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Kirk. Is motion a second discussion of the motion? None seen. I think we're ready.
Looks to be open.
Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. The motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.